Stand and join me in a moment of silence. Let's council with Pett to lead us into the floor.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Daniel, will you call them over?
Mayor O'Farrell.
Here.
Mr. Vickers.
Here.
Ms. Lilner.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
All right, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to add a proclamation of recognition for Mr. Steve Burt as letter him under the action and discussion items.
Second up, discussion. Daniel.
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
Ms. Lilner.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
All right. Consider the agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the following consent agenda. The mention of regular council meeting on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, the accounts payable, total one hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and thirty-seven cents, and the twenty twenty-four council meeting and holiday schedule.
Scott. Daniel.
Ms. Lilner.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Vickers.
Yes.
All right, no one signed up for citizen comment? Does any citizen here want to speak tonight other than an agenda item? Okay, nothing will move on. Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three audit, Robinson Farmer-Cox Association. Miss Begin, good to see you again as always.
Yeah. Good to see you too. I'm Sadie Begin of Robinson Farmer-Cox, the partner overseeing the audit for the Town of Loray. So here to talk about FY twenty-three. And I didn't bring any slides with me today, but I'll, you don't need slides to see and hear what we're going to talk about. The most important piece of deliverable of the audit, as your auditor, is our opinion on your financial statements. So on the first page of the financial report, you'll find our opinion on the financial statements. We've issued an unmodified opinion. That means we feel the financial statements are materially correct and they conform with generally accepted accounting principles. Also, as part of our audit, we have responsibility to look at the town's internal controls and compliance with various contracts and grant agreements and statutes. And then we would report to you if we identify any weaknesses in internal controls we feel are material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Also, we would report to you any noncompliance material to the financial statements. So happy to report, we don't have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls and no material noncompliance to report to you all for the audit. So I'll give you some highlights from the financial statements. Talk a little bit about them. The first set of financial statements you get in your financial report are prepared on the full accrual basis of accounting. These are exhibits one and two on page nine through eleven, if you're following along. So these exhibits will show the total position of the town combined. So overall, the town ended FY twenty-three with net position of twenty-three point four, almost point five million. And unrestricted net position of about two point seven million. The vast majority of the town's net position is invested in capital assets. So that portion of the net position is about twenty million, twenty, twenty point five million. And the town ended FY twenty-three with cash and cash equivalents of about five point seven million. FY twenty-three resulted in an increase in the town's net position of about four point eight million dollars. And that increase in that position is driven significantly by investing in capital assets with grant funded, with grants. So the ARPA grant had a major impact in FY twenty-three. There are other contributing factors as well, but that's really the driver for what drove the increase in that position. So the fund financial statements follow those government-wide financial statements, and they begin on page twelve with exhibit three. So these financial statements are prepared on the modified accrual basis of accounting, which is the way that you budget, more similar to what you're used to looking at throughout the year. So the first exhibits are the governmental funds, so that'll be the general fund and the CDBG fund. Those funds ended the year with a total fund balance of just under three million, and the majority of that was unassigned or available to meet the town's operating needs. We like to compare the ratio of the unassigned fund balance for a year to that year's general fund expenditures, kind of give an idea of financial health. So this year's expenditures were twenty-eight percent of the fund balance. So you could operate for twenty-eight percent of the year without taking in any money. Not that anyone would recommend that you do that, but that's strong. I believe the town's minimum fund balance policy is, I believe it's fifteen percent, I'll look at that. So it's well above that. And this is also a year when expenditures are up because you're going through a lot of that ARPA federal funding. So that can actually skew this ratio down a little bit. So still a strong ratio. So overall, the governmental funds for the town decreased in fund balance just a little bit. It was almost a break-even year. It's about an eighty-eight thousand dollar decrease in fund balance for the year. Now I'll talk a little bit about the water and sewer fund separately. These are the proprietary funds, business type activities. And water and sewer funds ended the year with net position of about nine point four million. And of that, the unrestricted portion of net position was one point four million. On exhibit eight, on page seventeen, you can see water and sewer funds had an overall operating income for the year of twenty-one thousand. And of course, that includes a noncash charge for depreciation of eight hundred and sixteen thousand. So those funds are supporting themselves as they should. After you take into account the grants and capital contributions, connections to water and sewer. So the overall increase in that position was about two point five million dollars for FY twenty-three. So there are also some items at the back of the financial report I always like to draw your attention to. If you're following along, on exhibit ten, page sixty-seven. This is a very summarized budget to actual comparison for just the general fund. So overall, the revenues came in over budget by about one point six million. Expenditures came in under budget by about nine million. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, nine hundred thousand. That would be a lot. Looking at total expenditures for nine million. So that's before transfers out, so some of that relates to transfers of spending of ARPA money to the water and sewer fund. So overall, the change in fund balance for the year, like I said, was about, was a decrease of eighty-seven thousand. But both revenues and expenditures had favorable budget variances for FY twenty-three. Also note, I always like to remind folks that at the very back of the report, there's a statistical section. And there's a lot of great information there that shows a ten-year history for the town. One table I wanted to point out this year is table number three, which is on pages ninety-one and ninety-two. And the town had a very strong increase for the year in other local taxes. So good results for meals tax, business licenses, lodging tax, and also a significant increase in bank stock tax for FY twenty-three. So overall, other local taxes increased by about sixteen percent over the previous years, so a noteworthy increase there. Some of that's rebounding of the economy for sure. Other factors also play in. And I also like to point out some information about the property taxes and property tax collection. So on table ten, on page one oh three. We have a ten-year spread on the tax levy and tax collections. So for fiscal year twenty-three, the total tax levy was about one point seven million. And one million, six hundred and forty-three thousand was collected in the year of levies. So that's about a ninety-four percent, just under ninety-five percent, collection rate, which is a strong collection rate, and it is consistent with how the town has performed over the last ten years. And then I'll also point out, at the very back of the report, there's a section called compliance. And the very final page of the report provides the results of our testing in relation to federal grants. So on page one twenty-two, we have our findings in question cost. So here we summarize that we've tested one federal program for, under a single audit for the town for FY twenty-three. We looked at the ARPA Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. This means we did a special in-depth audit work over that one grant, looking at the internal controls, how those monies were spent, and noting the compliance with their federal regulations. So as a result of that single audit, we had no findings and no question cost, and we did not identify any weaknesses in internal controls to report to you all. That is all I have for you from our report. There, the town slipped by and didn't have to implement the new standard this year, which had to do with subscription-based technology arrangements, SEVIVAS. So thankfully, the town didn't have any SEVIVAS for FY twenty-three, but there are some new accounting standards that'll impact future years. We've provided some information to the management about that. We'll be available to assist if there are any questions on implementing those. Do you all have any questions, Cornelia?
Sounds very good, like we're in pretty good shape, Ron.
Very good.
That's your question on table twelve.
Yeah.
Our assets, it looks good, and our fund balance is total debt. Now, page one oh five. Is that every debt, we call it bond, whether it's a loan from Blue Ridge Bank or who are that, everything?
That is gross bonded debt. So if you give me just one second, it definitely doesn't include some types of debt like leases. I know it doesn't include that. And let me just reference that there's a new disclosure in the report that covers all debt, and I just wanted to.
Water, that's water, that's our sewer plant, this building, everything, so.
Yes. Here we go. So. Yep. The only debt that it would not include, let's see. Yep, it's everything minus lease liabilities and then those other odd long-term liabilities. The net pension liability and the those one that's, those would be included, they're not debt, but you know. I believe all other debt is reflected there.
And that's gone down a lot over here.
I always like to hear your opinion of the town's overall financial situation. Are we in an excellent position compared to other people around us or?
Yeah, I think you're in a very good position. I think the town's well balanced with assets and debt. Obviously, carrying a strong net position. Your investment in capital assets is the largest portion of your net position, and that is net of any debt used to acquire the asset. So the town's net capital assets are worth twenty million dollars. That shows us you're in a good financial condition. The cash, cash and cash equivalents on hand are strong, five point seven million, so no concerns about meeting, you know, operating.
That's not a rainy day fund, that's, that used to be three million dollars.
So that's everything. That is all cash and cash equivalents of the town, and that would be all across all funds reported for governmental funds and water and sewer as well.
Does that include our last ARPA payment or who got that? That's included in the five.
Was that received? Yeah, it was.
Yes, it was received last year.
How did you figure, Steve, how much of that is ARPA fund?
Well, all totaled, it was, well, last year was one point two five, and I think we've only, we have six hundred thousand dollars that we have not spent.
Correct. Yeah, so at the end of FY twenty-three, it'll help you to have a point in time, at June thirtieth, cash and cash equivalents were five point seven million. There was unearned revenue of one point six million, so that's the ARPA money at that point.
Okay, anybody else?
I've been sitting here for years, listening to this, and it's always been a dead report, and it's a lot to do with everyone, and you know, Daniel, Brian, Steve, Danielle, and people came before as well. So congratulations and thank you, Sadie, for all the input.
Thank you again, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Everybody downtown in this room, place that way.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, good to see you. Just a few quick things. The shop mall was very successful this year. I was downtown for most of the afternoon. Our stores were busy, people were carrying packages, very good turnout. I was really excited to see so many people and so many local people, which was really great to see for downtown, so that was really good. Last Friday, we had shop late at eight, until eight, excuse me, and it seemed like that as well, as well for our merchants who were downtown. Christmas tree lighting was a big success. People seemed to be having a really good time. They were very pleased. I've had nothing but positive feedback on that event, so I don't know how we're going to top snow for next year, but we'll think of something. Tony Villa does an amazing job at helping us with that and kind of takes point on that event. Jen's been working hard, she and Greg getting ready for the town Christmas parade this Thursday, the fourteenth. I think you have quite a few entries. A big kudos to our page, to the Page Loray Chamber of Commerce. Their festival that they had, their holiday festival was very well attended, and it went very, very well. So I think Plancy's here tonight, and it was a really, really great event for them as well. So I think that we're seeing just more and more interest in downtown, which is exciting because that's our job. That's what we want to create is that. Our next big event coming up will be our year ends at ten on Ruffner's Plaza. That will start from eight o'clock and go until ten o'clock, and we have some fun activities planned for that as well. So hopefully you guys can bring your fam and come down and join us. And I will have Virginia Main Street here January second to finalize our work plan. And then once all of that is finalized, that will appear in your pockets so that you can see what LDI's work plan will be for the upcoming, probably year and a half, actually. And I have some other exciting things that I found out after five this evening, but I can't tell you right now. But just know that Susan Corbett and I are working with some folks. You might have some exciting news saying.
Just kind of whisper. Thank you, Jack. Councilor, thank you for that.
I do have a question. How do we get the results about the town events? I was looking the other day on Facebook trying to see the LDI action.
Usually, we do post on the Facebook page. We put it on our Facebook page. Then it also gets put on the town page and on the website, and the LDI website is usually where, that's where you're going to see it. And then, of course, a lot of word of mouth, flyers, that type of thing.
Does the Chamber, do we?
And the Chamber shares it also, yes. Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, we need to have a public hearing.
We have several tonight, Mr. Mayor. First, first public hearing that we have. Council's requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and consider a request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at one thirty-one Baker Drive in the planned neighborhood zoning district from Reka Paramishwan. The dwelling is approximately fifteen hundred square feet with two bedrooms and is located on one parcel. That's approximately zero point zero four acres in the Loray Landing subdivision. And a special use permit is required to operate the lodging house in the PND district. The staff recommend conditions for consideration, compliance with Town Code, section five nineteen lodging house regulations, that guest stay shall not exceed fourteen days, and that the special use permit shall not transfer upon sale of the property or membership interest composition of the holding company. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the application at their November fifteenth meeting.
Thanks, Steve. Anyone here tonight? I'll open the public hearing again, I did before. Anybody here tonight want to speak on this special use permit? If you haven't signed up. Steve, you have anything, any correspondence?
No, sir.
I hear nothing. Close the public hearing, Council.
Mayor have a motion. I move the town council through a request for the SEP to operate a lodging house at one thirty-one Baker Drive in the PND zoning district from the applicant as named in the application with the conditions as presented.
Second. Is it one thirty-one or one sixty-one?
One thirty-one.
One sixty-one. Okay, that's already considered, so we're sure, okay. Council, any discussion on that?
I did propose a question, and this may be a staff question, this may be a racy question. I followed the planning commission meeting where these applications were discussed, and a lady had spoke, and she had essentially sort of suggested that the HOA is currently, so the HOA that had said under their policies that these short-term rentals in that place are acceptable, that that HOA is still, the way she put it was in the hands of the developer. And I wanted to ask about that because the common theme that I've seen as we've approved these and as planning commission has approved these is, well, we do think it's weird to have these in a really dense neighborhood, but if the HOA has voted and the people that live there want to have it, then what happened? Now, the calculus for me changes if that HOA decision is being made by the developer versus if that HOA decision was made by a vote of residents who live there and have chosen to make Loray, you know, their full-time home. So I just wanted to pose that, and maybe we don't have that context, but I did want to see.
Well, no, sir, the HOA by state regulations, when it's established, it is the property owner and the controlling property owner. And until such time, and I can't tell you what the percentage is of the properties are sold, it's, I think it's in the seventy-five to eighty percent, I don't know.
Something to do with bond and lease and that.
Right. So until that point, it is comprised of the developer, and at the time that the majority of the properties are sold, then it does transfer to the individual property owners to make up and determine the board of the HOA.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I mean, it's definitely a thing where it's on paper, you know, it's a technically true thing, these things are allowed under the HOA policy. But the thing that comes to my mind is those people that are there voting, and obviously, we're not even at that critical mass where there's enough of them there to vote. So just want to put that out there because it's something I feel strange about, and I may actually be a no just on that nitpicky point because I just, I didn't feel good about that. I would like to, I guess in these conversations, if we're going to represent it as approved by the HOA, it is technically true, but I just felt that I didn't have that context as somebody that doesn't follow these kinds of things with developers.
Right, Council, any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lilner?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, special use permit, one sixty-one Baker Drive.
Yes, sir. Council's also requested to consider a special use permit for a lodging house at one sixty-one Baker Drive from Weijiang Doing Business as River Winds Management LLC. The dwelling is also fifteen hundred square feet with two bedrooms and is located on a corner zero point zero nine acre lot. Same conditions apply, and the planning commission also unanimously recommended approval of the application at their November fifteenth meeting.
All right, I'll open a public hearing. No one signed up to speak on this special use permit? Does anyone here tonight want to speak? See, nothing from.
No, sir.
I hear nothing, I will close the public hearing. Council?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a motion. Before I make the motion, I want to say again, as a reminder to those of you in the audience who lives at home, this is permitted by rezoning, and these homes were in fact advertised as the option of purchase as a short-term rental. So I heard that as well, and certainly respect her concerns, but I do know that it's been public that advertised as such.
Definitely, an investment opportunity for people.
So with that, I move the town council through the request for the SEP to operate a lodging house at one sixty-one Baker Drive in the planned neighborhood development zoning district from Weijiang Doing Business as River Winds Management LLC with the conditions as presented.
Second. Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lilner?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
All right, Mr. Burke, Loray Landing Master Land Use Plan.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to conduct a public hearing and receive citizen input to consider the request from Baker Development and Landmark Atlantic Holdings Company LLC for an amendment to the master land use plan for Loray Landing in the planned neighborhood development zoning district. The request seeks to reintroduce forty-two villa duplex units to replace townhome development included in the current master plan. As proposed, the Loray Landing development would include one hundred eighty-six townhomes, forty-four villas, forty-one single-family dwellings with a total density of five point two five units per acre. The amendment also includes minor adjustments to proposed road layout, utilities, and stormwater facilities. The public hearing and recommendation by the town council is required by Town Code. Staff have requested a number of information, and the applicant has provided that. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the land use plan amendment at their November fifteenth meeting.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this special use permit. No one signed up to speak? Does anyone here tonight want to speak on this? Steve, you have nothing?
No, sir.
Hear nothing, I'll close the public hearing. Council?
So these will or will not be permitted or considered for short-term rental?
The developer has indicated that similar to the single family, these will not be, they will prohibit the use of these as short-term rental.
Steve, does the staff think they'll get answers to all the questions you have?
We did get, we did get answers from them, sir.
All in the positive?
There, there are answers that, that makes sense to the town, yes, sir.
Have there been goobie restrooms at Athletic Field?
No, sir. That, that, that was not part of the original plan. That was just a question from the town. And, and their, what their, the response was that they will continue to proceed with the amenities that were originally planned.
Now, on the, the, I guess, latter question. Is it gonna be separate HOAs or one, or is it? And if it is one HOA?
A single, single HOA is what they're proposing.
Would you foresee them saying, as an HOA, we're gonna continue to have short-term rentals in the townhomes, but not in these other? Like, would they make such a decision?
Yeah, so the amendment that we're proposing will slide in and say basically the duplex, these forty-two duplexes will not be allowed to purchase as short-term rental.
And is the, were the single-family, will they be part of that amendment, or will there be a similar amendment for those?
I gotta, when that comes to that time to get that same approval, or town's already suggested that they will request that, that would be a similar amendment, yes.
Counsel, anybody else want to hit power?
Just to make sure, because I remember back in two thousand six, the, the community dream, the middle there, that is going forward at that time. If you go to the map, that would've been, because I remember sitting in the conference room. Right there, kind of right there in the middle. This, this layout right here is what you're going with, that's what?
No, that was.
That was the original.
Trying to get to the, the current one. They're just very dense images.
This is the current.
Okay.
So the majority of the community space went to behind food line there, in that large area.
That's what I was afraid of.
Oh, and there's also these guys.
And up there on that side, yes. In terms of the forty-two that we're requesting, that was previously approved for duplexes in that original master land use agreement. When it was, when that property was donated to the rescue squad, we kept it in PND, but removed those from the master land use plan at that time. Because there was any, there was no plan to go forward with that now that Landmark Land use comes in, we're gonna go back to those. So it's no different from that original approved master land use plans for those duplexes.
And I'm encouraged by the reintroduction of villas, because I think they're more marketable to local people, maybe seniors. And also really glad that we're able to get the amendments.
Versify a little bit here, yeah.
And that we're able to get the amendments on the short-term rentals. I'm glad that the developer is sympathetic on that. I think that's a good step.
Counsel, anybody else have anything? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel, what's your, what's your pleasure? Well, again, if I didn't close the public hearing, I'll close it now.
Eric, our motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to move the town council approves the amendment to the master land use plan for the Loray Landing in the planned neighborhood development zoning district to reintroduce forty-two villas and duplex units to replace townhome development, provide minor adjustments to proposed road layout, utilities, and stormwater facilities, and establish a total density of five point two five units per acre as presented.
Counsel, any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda, proclamation of recognition of David Sowers.
Yes, sir. The original should, should have been on your desk. I apologize. We will.
I, I give you the one that I wrote last.
I can read it, but the, the original is, we'll, we'll, we'll go get that for you.
Oh, yeah. Just so you got one to read.
Here.
Thank you. No worries.
David, will you come forward, please? We're the same age, buddy. No, 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 a long time, David. We went to high school, we had all the classes, everything.
Yep.
Long time. Anyway, David, we thank you for your service to town.
Yes, sir.
Ride through town and walkin' the greenway, your projects, your projects are everywhere. So whereas David Sowers began his career with the town of LuRay's Parks and Recreation Department on March thirtieth, nineteen ninety-two, and whereas Mr. Sowers has served various positions with the Parks and Recreation Department, ultimately being promoted to the crew leader. And whereas Mr. Sowers served as acting superintendent for the Parks and Recreation Department in twenty twenty, due to coronavirus related leave within the department. And whereas Mr. Sowers has managed and overseen construction and improvements of several park projects, including construction in the Hopsfield Greenways, Rancency Station Playground, Furious Park Shelters. And whereas Mr. Sowers designed and built the inflammation field, the Rough and the Closet Stage, the Oscar Sowers Footbridge, and the Covered Greenway Bridge beneath the train trestle along Virginia Avenue. And whereas Mr. Sowers has assisted in training many of the parks and recreation staff through his patient teaching method that has allowed the department staff to construct numerous projects with park staff. And whereas Mr. Sowers has announced his retirement from the town of LuRay effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and town council of the town of LuRay hereby express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for Mr. Sowers dedication and commitment to the town of LuRay. Congratulate him on the occasion of his retirement, and wish him the best and continue success in his retirement and future endeavors. This will be adopted tonight, December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. David, thank you so much for all you've done for the town. We certainly appreciate it. Good luck in your retirement.
I hope so.
Look this way.
You want to break it, don't you?
We got it.
Thank you again.
And we've, we've got the pretty copy up here. It's just getting signed. Don't go anywhere.
Well, we haven't voted on yet. I mean, that might be tight.
Yeah.
All right, Counsel, lead a motion.
I have a motion. I move the town council through the proclamation of recognition for David Sowers as presented, accept our thanks for his long-standing commitment to town LuRay, and wish him a long and wonderful retirement.
Discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, William Street, VDOT Urban Maintenance Program removal.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider the approval of the resolution requesting that VDOT remove William Street from the town's urban maintenance program. Following the November thirteenth town council meeting, staff have confirmed that the town does not own the right-of-way for William Street as previously, previously believed. Removal from the town's maintenance program will reduce the annual maintenance funding from the state by approximately a thousand dollars per year.
Counsel, any thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's inevitable, inevitable. If we do not own that property, then we should not be collecting the maintenance costs as well as the, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move the town council approve the resolution to remove William Street from the town's urban maintenance program and authorize the mayor, town manager, and assistant town manager to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the removal as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, Parks and Rec Portable Stage Donation, Page County Heritage Association.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider approval of the request from the Page County Heritage Association for the donation of the Parks and Recs portable stage. The department has not used the portable stage for any town events in the past four years.
Counsel, any thoughts on that?
Steve, I don't know what that looks like.
I have a question, maybe.
I don't know what that looks like. How valuable is that stuff?
Mr. Sowers constructed this stage, so.
Is it on wheels? Is it?
It is not.
No, it's just four by five wood. It's like, say, you got to put it, set it down, prop it up, put it together.
And so we're storing it right now and not using it.
Are we still storing it?
So it's currently at the fairgrounds. It was borrowed each year by the Heritage Festival for their cloggers and other performers.
So that's what it wanted to be?
Yeah, so I think we had built it for the Inlon Park concerts. And then, once we transitioned to Rough and the Plaza, we no longer needed it. We haven't used it for years, so it is actually just taking up space at Lake Arrowhead where we could utilize that storage for other.
That fairgrounds helps me a lot.
Yes.
Just curious, why would this come to us? Like, is it, is it an asset over a certain value? But is this classified as an asset?
Yes, sir.
From the books. Over, what's, what's the threshold of we have to ask to come before counsel? It's just a curiosity question. It's okay if you don't know offhand.
Yeah, I, I don't, and typically, we just err on the, the side of cautious by allowing counsel that opportunity and the recognition for providing it to the Heritage Association so it can continue to be used.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
I think it makes sense that they can use the storage space, and we're currently not having used it for this many years. Looks like there is a benefit, you know, with Heritage Association. I'll move the town council approve the request and donate the portable stage to the Page County Heritage Association as presented.
I second that. Any more discussion? Daniel?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, I'm telling you, utility requests, Forward for Christ Baptist Church.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider approval of the request from the Forward for Christ Baptist Church located at 169 Hinton Road to connect to the town water and sewer facilities through the construction of approximately six hundred feet of water and sewer mains to connect to the town's existing infrastructure on Collins Avenue. The town has determined that it has capacity for these connections. The request also came to consider a ten-year plan of payment for the connection fees in consultation with the town attorney. Staff recommend that we delay consideration of that request until such time that the, the town attorney can provide a, a more full response to, to that request. It does appear that the state code has specific restrictions upon that type of request. And we will just request counsel to delay action on that, but to proceed with consideration of the request for the, to allow them to extend facilities to connect to the town, and that they will work with the town manager to proceed with the necessary agreement to make that happen.
Steve, it seems like to me we've done this in the past. We've had delayed payments for organizations.
We've had them for organizations. And the code that the town attorney was able to identify has specific restrictions upon churches. And that's where we're hoping to find, to give, give the town attorney a little more time to confirm that. But yes, sir, it, it allows consideration for nonprofit organizations, but there is specific language to churches.
So would the work, would the work not begin until after that?
Well, we, we will, we will let the, the church know that there may not be the possibility for the, a termed payment for the connection fees and see if that affects their, their consideration at all. But we're hoping that if it doesn't, counsel's approval tonight will allow them to continue the process.
In case y'all don't know, Jason's dealing with a family matter tonight, and that's why we have Mr. Daniel Rose here. Nice to have you.
Good to be here. Thank you.
So we need, and Steve and I talked about this earlier, I mean, we can, we can, we have plenty of capacity and order to do it, right?
Yes, sir.
As in the past, they have to come to us, they've got to bring their lives to us.
Yes, sir. And, and approval tonight does not require them to connect. It, it simply gives them the ability to connect. And if the payment issue is, is an issue, then it, it doesn't, they aren't held to, to that connection.
I think I'd be ready to make a motion, okay? Good neighborly thing. I move that town council approve the request from Forward for Christ Baptist Church located at 169 Hinton Road for out-of-town water and sewer connections as presented. Further authorize the town manager, town attorney, and town treasurer to execute all agreements necessary to provide this connection.
Any more, any discussion, please? Daniel?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
All right, fifteen minute parking, West Main Street, Page One, Steve?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider approval of a request from Page One to install a fifteen-minute parking space in front of their thrift store located at forty-two West Main Street to allow delivery, their delivery vehicle, space for deliveries and collections.
And to provide context, they have reached out to me, I'm not sure if they had this previously. The director was under the impression that they did at one point, but he's kind of newer to the town. But it, it would make sense, because they've had some issues with just the residential component. And they do have a big truck. They've got to be able to unload there. That's really the most ready, the only ready access point to that floor of the store, which is where they keep the furniture and everything. And also, people that are buying furniture are getting able to get it out of there. So wanted to bring that up and see what counsel thought. I think they've provided a, a letter and some images.
I've got one comment, just thought, and what I've seen happen there through the years. They used to cone off. They would put some cones out and basically block the, the space, because it's their delivery truck, correct? So they know it's ETA, or it's, of course, it's date, and then probably, you know, whether it's two hours out or, you know, whatever. So, and the only reason I bring that up, and I realize there's been a, been a change there, and I don't believe, and I'll ask Steve and Brian, was there any problem in the past when they would cone off the section for the truck?
It's, it's.
If you knew it was coming?
It's my understanding from the, the new executive director that they have had some issues with the tenants in the apartment next door parking in front of this building on, on street overnight. And they don't have the ability then to place the cones where they, where they are most effective for them. And so that's where they're having the, the request for this, is that the, the fifteen-minute parking would be eight to five. What, what they're having now is some of the, the tenants in the apartments that are parking on West Main Street and then not allowing their, their delivery vehicle the space that it needs.
Okay.
Steve, I, I like to have the chief's perspective. Is this going to be something that's hardened in force?
No, I mean, I'm sure if somebody violates the call.
I remember you told me this past one time.
I mean, it's, it's difficult.
They put toys and stuff out in the road to wipe off.
They used to put, like, things from inside the store, chairs and stuff out the block. I, I prefer the fifteen myself.
Okay.
That way, we, we could, I'm sure they'll call us if somebody violates it, but also the apartment people as well. You know, if they were, had a delivery truck coming, there's two-hour parking now. It would be hard to locate whoever's car is to get it moved for them, so I think fifteen is fine, I think.
Okay, thank you.
I think the only drawback with, with fifteen-minute parking, we've got six fifteen-minute parking spaces in existence now between the railroad tracks and top of the hill. There's, there's three right here, LDMB, the town, and Loray Coffee Service, this side of the light. When you go through the light, there's fifteen minutes that was just approved last year before Broad Porch, and there's two fifteen minutes on the left side at Vivian's, which the two on the left side of Vivian's will be exactly opposite of fifteen-minute parking at Page One. The drawback I personally see with it is thinking of the merchants, the, the businesses on Main, that anytime we designate a restricted parking area, that's one less space for the tourist that's coming downtown to park and get out of their car and not know if they're gonna be twenty minutes or two hours, you know, till they return to their car. That's just, me personally, I like the cone idea since it's not like. Um, that's just, me personally, I like the cone idea, since it's not like it's a uh a UPS FedEx delivery or something where you really don't know when the truck's coming. You know, they know when their truck is coming, but anyway, that's just a thought. I, I, as small as Main Street is and as valuable as the parking is for the vitality of the businesses, both locals and tourists downtown, I hate to see us take that Main Street and restrict spaces.
Is it like eight to six or something like that, fifteen-minute parking? Could do something like that, or is that?
Eight to six or eight to five?
Eight to five, yeah, eight to five.
Doesn't interfere with the evening weekends and that's a good point, so.
No, sir.
Because I think the only sticking point is like if somebody's parked there and they're getting up late or something, and you know, you want to do your truck in the morning, which would be the time to do the truck, and they've just still got the car there.
Well, of course, the truck could arrive, and any car could be sitting in the fifteen-minute space.
Yeah.
You know, whether the back end fifteen or not, maybe.
This is seven minutes a week from Monday to Friday.
Monday to Friday.
That helps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, man, I think it's a valid point, you know, Jason, I had a little thought about that, so I appreciate that.
Because we are, we are, as our downtown is increasing, and as Jackie has said, and, and more of these empty buildings are getting filled, and we've got business, we've got to think, got to have parking for those.
The fifteen-minute parking is requested by the business center, correct?
What's that?
The fifteen-minute parking is our request to the business center.
Yeah, but, but you're affecting, when you think of Main Street.
Well, I agree, I agree, but I thought, as I was saying, that I think the, like the two in front of Vivian's, that's so he can pull in, load his truck and go.
Right, because it's the type of business that has that, but what we also have is, we've got to think that if if you were going to eat tonight at the Chop House, or you were going to eat at Washington Market,
you have extra.
Uh, you, you know, you're going to have to pick a space somewhere. Most of these, you're going to be walking, uh, you know, some distance.
With the concept of fifteen-minute in general, you're effectively allocating a parking spot to a business. In a sense, right, that's kind of what you're doing.
And I will say, like. This is.
Practically speaking, so yeah, we do need to be careful with them.
Yeah, we just got to be cautious with them.
And this is, I mean, and I will say, and the point is really well taken, because this is precious space. This is for the functioning of their business. Uh, councils have approved these for prior businesses, and it just so happens that this business doesn't, you know, isn't a wonderful place that sells coffee for profit in a place that I like to go into and get pastry, but this is a business that is able to sell things at a price point that helps people upfront because it's cheap, and then in a way that makes proceeds that then go and help people. And this is also an institution that I think really, I mean, we're, we've got ARPA floating around, and we're talking about how COVID has impacted our town and people, and I see an institution like Page One as like one of the ones that carried those people on their backs in a really strong way. Uh, so for me, in terms of consistency through time, my position would be you're going to do it for the, the private business, I would do it for the public business that also has a retail function, but um, which is not for profit, but I, I think the point is well taken about the precious of the space, but I just think, I think we got to be consistent, and I think consistency means allowing this business to have this for this business functioning, um, which is different from other businesses, but is still a retail function on our Main Street.
Yeah, and I've got nothing against Page One.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I bring up this stuff, and it's, if we look at the other fifteens, just to add on to what you're saying, I know there are private businesses there that have requested it, but they're a business that, just as the town, is, we've done our own fifteen-minute spot out front here in the corner, and I've used it when I pay my water bill, you know, sometimes it's open, sometimes it's not, but it's a, the fifteen-minute ones that we have are primarily in front of, just like LDNB, same thing, people pull in there, run in, drop off their payment, come out, you know, it, it's stopping points just like the coffee shop. You know, they're running, it's not the person that's going to go in and drink their coffee there, it's the person that's going to order at the counter and leave. But um, but no, I, I'm not saying what I said against Page One, I just want to make that clear to the listening audience, because I appreciate all of that, dude. I just think that we, we've really got to think through when we put restrictions on our Main Street parking.
Definitely, definitely, and I, I would never, I, nothing there. I, 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 your, your record itself shows a, a dedication to local nonprofits and local people, so that question should never be a question at all.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I move that town council approves the request from Page One to install fifteen-minute parking space in front of the thrift store at forty-two West Main Street as presented.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
All right, the next item, um, I'll just handle this, this is for cell phone purchase for Dave and Steve. And in the past, we've just given the phones. And let's see, uh, so I'll let you all take it from there.
Would have to drop it from our plan, though, but you have time.
Is that a motion I hear looking?
Yeah, that's a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, uh, any more discussion? All right, Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Don't forget to call us occasionally.
I've already given Danielle and Danielle the phone number, so. And thank you.
That means we can still reach you too.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, City and Tree Beautification Committee bylaws?
Yes, sir, council has requested to consider approval of, of the update to the Tree and Beautification Committee bylaws adopted by the committee at their October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting. The committee was established by town council on September twelfth, two thousand, with an ordinance providing the committee's current guidance and bylaws.
Good to see the original agreement back in two thousand, liberal without.
Yes, sir.
All right, counsel, any thoughts?
I appreciate all that they've done on us. I have a motion, uh, move that town council approve and adopt the Tree and Beautification Committee bylaws as presented.
Second that.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Okay, IMH interim town manager appointment, counsel?
Mayor, I have a motion. I move that the town council appoint Brian Christman as interim town manager and authorize the mayor to establish salary to bring in vote services.
Second.
Any discussion? Danielle, other visiting members?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, so you're back to your twenty twenty-three town Christmas bounty.
Yes, sir, council has requested to consider approval of a five-hundred-dollar total Christmas bonus for all full-time employees and what's the key word? Full-time, non-part-time, non-seasonal? Full-time, non-seasonal, I apologize, full-time, non-seasonal employees for twenty-twenty-three. Uh, the FY twenty-three, twenty-four uh bonus is currently a hundred and fifty dollars in the budget. The additional funding of approximately nineteen thousand dollars is available uh, in surplus areas in various department budgets, as well as council's miscellaneous expenses. Uh, with the, the declaration of COVID-nineteen epidemic, uh, ARPA funds can no longer be used for hazard pay. The town attorney has determined that a uh, a an ordinance be adopted to comply with town code, uh, state code, uh, and a copy of that ordinance is at your seats.
Yeah, it was, we, you know, the ARPA funds weren't, we were given two years of bonuses, more generous, um, and this is something I brought up, uh, and I think Alex and Stephanie and I have talked about it. Um, we had a good audit tonight, so I think we've got the money. So, uh, I think it's, I like to make it an annual thing, uh, I think five hundred is the, uh, worthy bonus. We appreciate our employees, uh, talking to Steve and Danielle, it looks like the, the funds are there. They're limited, have to stretch things. Uh, so that'd be the case, that's, that's why uh, we moved this forward for discussion.
Still one thing that I wanted to flag in the conversation, um, and I can't speak to other departments, but I know in talking to Parks and Rec, one thing that came up, and of course, Parks and Rec is a department where you have some really long-time seasonal part-time employees, and they had mentioned that there was a time when they did receive a Christmas bonus, and that that had stopped, and I, I really, I don't have the details or the institutional knowledge to answer that, and maybe y'all do.
Um, historically, it's only been for part-time folks that are considered like quasi-full-time, um, that are, that are the maximum part-time hours the entire year. Um, so that may have been the situation then. Um, I don't really recall a time where it was for all seasonal, um, but it, it would apply to those folks that are essentially year-round.
Yeah.
That, that would mean that if we had a lifeguard work for two weeks, we'd be needing to get in the five hundred and nine months.
Right.
That was, that was never the situation.
So that's why it's full-time, part-time.
And that was just something, something that somebody brought up to me, and maybe with that being said,
Right, right.
I think of a, a couple of these, like, really great, long-time seasonal folks that are with Parks and Rec, that really carry a lot when they are on, on their time. I just, I wonder if there's something that we can do.
Well, one thing that Jennifer and Danielle did do, I think it was last year, at, at, after talking with some of the, the long-term seasonals, um, all, all of our seasonals, once they have returned for a second year, they qualify, their salary then qualifies for the COLA that is implemented to all full-time employees, so um, there is a, a benefit that is given to our seasonals, they don't start at the same.
Yeah, they don't come back at the same seasonal.
They, they, they do qualify for the COLA, so there is, we, we, we try to value our, our long-term seasonals as, as we can, and and as Councilman, Vice Mayor Vickers indicated, if we start expand, extend, expanding the, uh, the bonus to anyone seasonal, we, we employ twenty to twenty-five folks.
Additional folks.
As seasonal, and um, and typically, uh, they are, they, they've left our employment by the time Christmas comes around, just because of the seasons.
Got you, thank you.
I like the idea that you've done it because we have a budget surplus. I don't think it should be an annual thing, because we don't know from year to year what the budget's going to be, so I don't mind doing this once a year. I mean, that, the amount could fluctuate also.
So we haven't given the one-fifty yet?
We have not.
So this is just, this would change it just a five hundred.
That's correct.
It would, it would be six hundred and fifty then? It'd be, okay.
Be a total of five hundred. I'm, I'm, I'm sure six fifty would be appreciated by many, but we're only asking for the five hundred.
All right, counsel?
I'll make the motion that the town council approves a five-hundred-dollar Christmas bonus for all full-time and all full-time, part-time town employees and authorize the mayor to execute the ordinance authorizing bonuses as presented.
Any more discussion? All right, Danielle?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Since we don't have to vote on the ordinance, is that correct?
Um, the ordinance for the bonuses?
Yeah.
If that was approved, then.
Yes. He, he read the one with the ordinance.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I was confused, yes, it was approved.
All right. Orders placed on here for it to vote, send a certificate.
So Danielle just filled out, oh, I go to you sign.
That, that basically the vote that y'all had qualifies for that, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, uh, contract addendum, one twenty-one North Ford, Hawkesville Street.
Yes, sir, council has requested to approve an addendum to the sales contract for one twenty-one North Hawkesville Street and authorize the town manager, town treasurer, and town attorney to execute all documents necessary to allow the, the current tenant, Loray Auto Body LLC, to continue use of the property until January eighth, twenty-twenty-four. Upon closing on the property, the town was informed that the tenant had understood that they would have additional time at the property to close out their work. Uh, the town attorney has drafted the addendum uh to facilitate this. Uh, in addition, the addendum establishes a hundred-dollar per-day liquidated damage fee that should the tenant fail to vacate the property. Uh, upon notice from the town attorney, uh, there is also a request to allow the town manager, based upon any circumstances that may arise at the end of the contracted time, if there is the need for an additional five days to accommodate a, a, a better transition uh, for council to approve, uh, give the town manager that authorization as well.
All right, counsel, any thoughts on that? Uh, current tenant still carrying all available insurance.
To my understanding, that.
Through this period.
I believe that is one of the, the, the tenants of, of the contract that uh Jason has developed, is that it would, that it is incumbent upon them to maintain all, all insurance necessary, and if there's any specific damage to the property, then uh, it's, they have to, they have to transfer it in as-is condition.
And yes.
And Steve, if this caused, you want to finish with what they got on cars that they're working on right now?
Yes, sir.
Let's see, it's fair, let's get finished with what we did.
And there's no immediate need by, by public work, so we can, we can, we can try to work with them, since they were, were an existing business in, in the town.
Yeah, and, and it was a good accommodation when we talked to each other about it, yeah.
Well, it came as a surprise uh to, to, to us, just not the tenant. The tenant had understood that uh, they would, they would be given additional time.
I'd like to make the motion that the town council approves the addendum to the sales contract for one twenty-one North Hawkesville Street to allow the tenant continued to use the property to January the eighth, twenty-twenty-four as presented. I further move that the town council authorize the town manager, town treasurer, town attorney to execute all documents necessary to fulfill this use.
And there is a, a modified one.
In addition, uh, that the town manager has the ability to extend the use fifteen days to a good cause of issue.
Second.
All right, discussion? Danielle?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, you have any budget goal?
Uh, yes, sir, this is just an opportunity, uh, staff are starting their, their preparation of, of the budget. Uh, the budget calendar is presented to y'all. Um, staff wanted to, the opportunity, just if there's any high-level goals, if council was expecting to increase the real estate tax rate by twenty percent, you know, that way we would need to know that as we prepare the budget. I'm, I'm exaggerating, uh, there is, there's no request for any, 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 any increases, but if there's any, any general goals that council would have specific to either rates or projects or other initiatives, so that as staff develop the, the budget, we can, uh, we can try and incorporate them into the budget. And then one thing that Danielle was notified by the, the county, that the county has actually adjusted their uh, how they, they deal with the uh median household income for retired exemptions, exemptions for elderly and disabled people. Uh, they have recently increased the uh income from twenty-one thousand dollars to fifty-three thousand dollars. Uh, staff would recommend if, that the, the impact to our real estate uh, tax revenue would be very dramatic if council considered a similar uh, adoption. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention, so that if someone asks why there's a disparity, it's simply because the county just did that.
I'm sorry, Steve, you said the exemption from twenty-one to?
The, the annual income for, that qualifies for, for the, the exemption for elderly and disabled for their real estate tax. Their income that the county will consider has increased from twenty-one thousand dollars to fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, we, we don't know the basis where that, that came from. The impact to the town would be dramatic. Um, we were, staff will consider, will, will discuss that with you, but uh, there might be uh, reason, uh, the ability for us to increase it slightly or to adjust our percentages. or to adjust our percentages that would be considered. But if you hear about that, please, we are aware of it. It is challenging for the town to consider that drastic of an increase in the income that could qualify. We understand that anyone that is retired, they are on a fixed income, but that level would basically remove the tax, the real estate tax from most everyone that is retired in the town. And the real estate tax revenue impact would be dramatic to us.
I mean, the average household income in counties is around mid-fifties.
Right.
So pretty much.
So keep in mind, though, it is a sliding scale. I spoke with the commissioner's office today, and they did tell me that this was passed last week. And they have chosen to cap the income based on, based on that median household income so that they do not have, they use that verbiage so that they do not have to return each year to the board supervisors to allocate specific amounts. So they have chosen to use census bureau data and just maintain that amount every year. However, it is on a sliding scale, but I do feel like that's going to be a significant increase for us. Right now, our cap is at twenty-one thousand. And keep in mind, twenty-one thousand in annual income does not guarantee one hundred percent relief. You know, in fact, that's much less. So at this point, if the household income were to be fifty-three thousand, they would only receive, I believe, about twenty-five percent relief. But nonetheless, that includes a lot more folks. And we've already seen an upswing in those folks who are taking advantage of veterans' relief. And of course, you know, those are one hundred percent relief with proration, despite the fact that the town does not prorate. So I could see this probably doubling our tax relief. And right now, we're at about eight, seventeen to eighteen thousand in relief. I would hate to see us double that because that quickly approaches a rate increase of one percent.
Is there, and this is just a question as an ignoramus on the topic. Since this is the county acting in regards to those, the county real estate taxes, are we obliged to act?
No, no.
But what it will do is it will cause.
But people are going to be like, well, I got it here.
I got it here.
County one, why do I pay my own?
Yes. And again, we just wanted to bring it to your attention because most of the folks that have heard about it from the county will then.
Correct.
I'm getting it from the county. Why aren't I getting it from you? We just wanted to bring it to your attention. And we will continue to work with y'all through the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And if anyone asks, you probably will not see something to the level that the county has adopted, recommended.
Typically, end of December, first of January, we do send out the applications for tax relief. And those are due back by April one. We sort of wanted to get a little bit of direction as we are sending those out, sort of what to expect. And we tried to make the language on those applications very generic in case that would change. But nonetheless, it would be good to know where we're headed, if that's a consideration. We're under no obligation to do that. However, folks who apply with us, also apply with the county, we get the phone calls that, hey, I qualified here. Why didn't I?
I want to speak for myself, but I don't think, I didn't have any thought of that. Something that dramatic.
Yeah.
I can't see. It's a simple sort of shop.
And that has passed the county?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm surprised because you could have made it adjustable by saying like X percent of the median income. And then it would still be adjustable.
He's not giving people.
So there is, there is a scale of how much. However, I mean, that's.
Yeah, we don't know that the county, we don't know that the county has fully realized the potential impact on their revenue as well.
Yeah, I'm just so curious.
It's questionable. I mean, it's, it's.
It's shocking.
People have to have their house paid off and hopefully have any significant debts without raising kids.
What's going to happen with the rate?
For everyone else?
Yes.
That's it. That's all I'm saying, right?
Well, I think that's what we've been saying is it's important for us to be conscious of that because we don't want to consider a rate increase to make up for a discount.
Well, we could send like a one pager of all the wonderful town services that we receive. I like the water. I'll go on the record saying I like the water a lot.
Well, again, the main discussion is if council has any high-level goals as far as the, and if you don't, can't think of them tonight, please let Danielle or Brian know in the near future.
I'd love to see that we can raise the police salaries to be competitive with those folks around us upfront. I'm tired of having to go back and add something to it when we find out we can't hire enough officers.
Well, I would, I will respond to that saying that that is an admirable goal. I think the corollary to that is that we need to also look at the base of most all of our positions because we are in a, if we can't provide the minimum services, having all of the wonderful investment in both equipment and facilities that we've done with ARPA, we will need, we will need people to maintain them and to operate them. And like the chief, our public works department is currently has three open positions. And we are, we have gotten some applications, but it's not near the volume that we did in the past. And there's a number of issues about that. But I would, I would hope that council would be amenable to a discussion of how we can adjust salaries, the base salaries, to better attract employees in all of our positions.
You know, I talked to Danielle about that months ago, and I just asked her, just for my personal curiosity, what would cost? And that's saying every employee get ten percent, what would a ten percent across the board look like? You know, we, like a lot of places, we're, you know, especially toward the middle to lower end of the pay scale. You know, we used to put an ad up for a public works person, I think, you know, ten, fifteen years ago. You get twenty applications. Now at our rates, you know, we have a hard time finding many people. And sometimes people have maybe hopped around a little bit, it doesn't always work out. So I think looking at the, without doing a study or sending it anywhere, just looking at what a, you know, I got the ten percent number, you know, it's hard decisions to make. But I think that should be priority number one going into this budget cycle.
I would say for capital improvement or anything because it's projects that they bring on the prioritization.
Okay.
That's probably standard practice that I think here in, just the conversation we're having tonight. There's a lot of tough decisions to be made. And we, the directors, the department heads, it's critical.
Yeah, I think the rest of the ARPA funds, I think I have twenty-four to spend those. So we probably need to look at that some, but it's got a side budget item. And I appreciate all the work and everything, keeping up with that staff. But that probably needs to be settled here in the first quarter. Twenty-four is how that's going to be allocated.
And I think there might be a retention part of the conversation too, potentially. And this goes back to some of those visits I've had over at Parks and Rec. I mean, just, and I know we do the COLA and everything, but if there's, within all the restraints that we have to operate under, which are many, if there's anything we could do to give more love to our longtime people that are sticking around as very experienced people that could probably go elsewhere and make a lot more money because they believe in the town, they believe in the team, that's just a thought. I mean, and we're subject to a lot of constraints, so I don't expect anything out of that thought.
Well, as a short timer, one thing I will offer to council, part of, in my opinion, part of the problem that we are having finding new people is that the Virginia retirement system has transitioned from a dedicated pension program to a program where you simply receive funding towards a four fifty-seven program. And so that is a program that effectively you can get pretty much at any employer of report. One thing that the council may want to consider and work with staff through the development is the potential match of, into a retirement program of the employee's choice. Again, it's not, it is an additional cost, but it would hopefully give the town a little bit of a leg up as far as the benefit package when we're looking to attract new people. Again, the loss of the defined benefit pension program really, in my opinion, was a challenge placed on local employment by the state with no offset to help our recruitment.
Do we put the ARPA stuff in the budget or is that what, as I said, is that kind of side budget? Silent capital improvement?
We, if council does not anticipate allocation of it by June of twenty twenty-four, we would include whatever the anticipated remainder would be in the twenty-five budget. It won't, it won't be a large amount. Again, we only have about six hundred thousand. And I know that council is looking at discussion of some of the use, be it either a pickleball facility or funding towards some of the nonprofits. So somewhere between zero and six hundred thousand would be what would potentially be included in your twenty-four, twenty-five budget. But it would not be specified for any specific items.
All right, anybody else on the budget?
I know we've talked about how there's kind of internal projection figures the staff sort of uses to inform things. And as we talked about, the idea of kind of having council get a look at projected things in terms of revenues and future big expenses. Even if it's a rudimentary thing that you guys use, I think it'd be cool to have council see that too so we can really plan ahead as well.
Okay, Steve.
Actually, I think this is our last item.
I don't know if we had anyone.
Oh, oh, sorry. Next item, council's requested to consider approval of a request from the Luray Moose Lodge Family Facility, number fourteen thirteen, located at two fifty-seven Dry Run Road to connect to town water facilities through the construction of approximately two hundred feet of water main to connect to the town's existing infrastructure on Dry Run Road. The town does appear to have capacity for this connection. They would be required to develop their plan for how that connection would occur. We have, we anticipate that they will need to obtain an easement over one of the adjacent property owners on the other side that is between the town facilities and their property. And again, if approved by town council, the applicant would need to execute an agreement by which they agree to be governed by the provisions of the town code, ordinances of the town, and other specific regulations that the town may apply. And then from time to time, adopt and direct concerning the waterworks and water supply.
Would you all like to speak? Anything to add?
Um, sure. We twice, we've been, we've had two instances in the last five months where there was Ecoli present in our water. So we've been working with the Office of Drinking Water from the state. And this last time it came about, it kind of increased the urgency because now this, excuse me, this is the second time this has happened. So they asked us, kind of in good faith, to contact you guys if there was the possibility to tap into the town water or possibly purchasing a chlorinating system for our water and a UV light system. So because our two biggest people are older folks and young children who are most susceptible, we're just trying to cover our bases here and make sure that we've got something to put into play to correct this. So we appreciate.
You have water, it's just contaminated, you're not having a shortage of water right now.
No, sir. No, we're under a boil water effect right now, so.
I'm always in favor of selling more water. Profit it from telling.
Sure.
As Mr. Burke kind of anticipated, you know, you're all responsible for bringing the water line through our, through our. And fighting about quite a bit.
Correct. And again, it's kind of a watch and wait here. If you guys were to approve it, then we would have to get a plan and a cost to that. So again, just trying to cover our bases. We may not be able to do this because of the financial burden it would put on us. So that's why we're just trying to consider everything.
And your septic system, I'm assuming everything's fine, and you have no interest in the sewer side of it, just the water side of it?
Just the water.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, this is Gerald Brube, the administrator of the Luray Moose Lodge.
Anybody else have questions? Well, we thank y'all for what the Moose does, y'all do a lot for the community.
Thank you.
We try to, and we're really growing each year. We're doing a lot of positive things. So yeah, we're trying to do everything we can to improve the lodge and make it better for all our members and what we can do in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your consideration.
Sorry, we kept our waiting so long.
That's okay.
All right, council. And again, as we talk, we do have enough order if they decide that we have capacity. And it's not going to, we don't have to do anything.
I just need to get with them, and I want to get her cell phone number this evening, depending upon your actions. So I can deal with Moose Lodge directly and quickly.
All right, council, what's your pleasure? Any more questions? More discussion?
I think it's another one of those good neighborly things. I mean, Moose does a lot, so if it helps, it helps.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move the town council approves the request in the Luray Moose Lodge family center, number fourteen thirteen, located at two fifty-seven Dry Run Road for out-of-town water connections as presented. I further authorize the town manager, town attorney, and town treasurer to execute all agreements necessary to provide this connection.
Second.
Any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, will you go down front, please? What's going on? Well, Steve, we're sorry to see you go. We want to thank you for what you've done. You did a wonderful job to do that. So whereas Steve Burke, a distinguished local government administrator, has served the town of Luray, Virginia as the Luray Town Manager for the past five years now and has an opportunity to enhance his career in local government by accepting a position with another Virginia municipality, and will be leaving his service with the town of Luray on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And whereas Steve Burke was appointed to the town manager of Luray in March, two thousand and eighteen, and has served the mayor, town council, and the citizens of Luray in an outstanding fashion during his tenure. And whereas Steve Burke willingly accepted the duties of the town planner and zoning administrator in addition to his duties as the town manager, thereby resulting in significant savings to the town budget and Luray taxpayers. And whereas Steve Burke has provided professional and experienced leadership to the town staff during his tenure as town manager, promoted staff development, mentored senior-level staff, and effectively utilized the full potential of the town's workforce. And whereas Steve Burke consistently acknowledges his staff for their commitment and contributions to the effective delivery of municipal service to the citizens of Luray. And whereas Steve Burke and his financial team have provided sound financial guidance to the mayor and council through the efficient preparation, execution, and management of the town's annual budget. And whereas Steve Burke has successfully planned, initiated, and managed numerous large capital improvement projects for the town while effectively utilizing the town's fiscal resources, prudent public finance programs, and available grant funding resulting in improved municipal services to the citizens of Luray. And whereas Steve Burke has successfully promoted the town of Luray via social media, his participation in various professional groups and conferences, and by maintaining a strong physical presence within the community as its town manager. Therefore, be resolved that the Luray mayor and town council extends their superior appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Burke for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the town's elected officials, the town staff, and most importantly, the citizens of Luray, and wishes Mr. Burke the very best in his future local government service. Adopted this eleventh day of December, twenty twenty-three, by the Luray Town Council. Steve, we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're in good hands.
All right, council. Need a motion? Yeah, just to bring the conversation.
I'd like to motion that we adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented to Mr. Burke and uh and thanks for all of his great service to the town and also in wishing him the best in his future administration.
Thank you.
Second one. Discussion. Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Recker?
Yes.
Mr. Lowers?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
All right, that's all on the agenda. Mr. Rose, you have anything for us for the time? I know you're kind of filling in. Again, appreciate you being here and taking your schedule at the last minute. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks for having me.
Have a safe trip back.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any uh council comments? I would say.
Parade on fourteen. Yeah. What, how many do we have of Luray coming?
Oh, could I, if I come into the parade?
Bringing me and my posse.
Okay.
There should be a, at your places.
Yeah, we have, that was very helpful, by the way.
Yeah, Jennifer wanted to make sure that y'all got that tonight.
I think this is the first year. We've had the info sheet for the parade.
This, we got a first shot, yeah.
Yeah, I think we got an email last year. I remember talking to somebody at the Walmart.
That's possible, too.
But anyway, so we got how many is the lineup then? So I was asking, how many entries?
Oh, entries.
I think we're nearing a hundred. I, I, I know that
Oh, wow.
Um. Yeah, it's, it, I, I know that as, as much as she tries to encourage people to sign up at the prescribed time, she was actually, she told me she was here till about six o'clock still receiving folks that were hoping to be able to be included. So it, it, it will be a very good parade.
Have you heard any kickback from having on Thursday? It used to be a Friday and Saturday.
It's been on Thursday for a couple of years.
Yeah.
It's been for a while, but, you know, people ask it, Thursday.
Safe staff.
It's, it's intended to not interfere because the, the, what we were having to do when it was a Friday or Saturday is there's so many other communities, so many other commitments from folks that Thursday seems to be a day that typically people don't have something planned during the holiday season. So it, it, it's, you know, obviously, we're getting a good response as far as the uh parade entrance, so hopefully we'll have an equal response as far as residents that are able to attend and, and and enjoy the parade.
Thursday parade also, once again, back to businesses, it's less impact on the restaurants who are primarily Friday, Saturday nights, big dinner nights. It really, the whole street shut down there, you know, can't get to them, so.
Everybody gonna be there? Uh, the only other thing I have is, of course, we're having a appreciation luncheon for Steve twelve o'clock. At twelve o'clock on the fourteenth, so you can have lunch before the parade and sing along. Um, if y'all can make that. Um, I did mention uh getting our annual retreat a little earlier and January sixth, I think we need to get started as soon as we can, but other things to decide. Does that suit everybody?
Yeah.
Ever do with that date? That's okay. Y'all have another location and we'll do it then.
You have a little thing?
I'm gonna let you, uh, we didn't tear much last year, get in there. Uh, Danielle, can you look into that for us?
Sure.
We just start about nine o'clock and we get coffee and demolition and uh the light lunch.
I guess I missed the tail end of the council comments, and I'm sorry to add seconds to this meeting because I know what's going on. Um, Arise had reached back after me and mentioned that we all invited, when they do the deliveries, anybody would like to join them. I think they said they do Tuesdays, Thursdays. I'm not sure if they also said Wednesdays. Maybe that's something we can get more info on in the new year, but just wanna put on people's radar.
Guess that's all. Anybody else? We're adjourned, but we are gonna have the audio Christmas cards. They're on everybody.